Much allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, invincible, without any doubt.
Welcome this evening, Tuesday, August 26th, for our regular meeting at 6:30. First thing I need to do is we need a motion to approve the agenda, but before that, I need to move Harold to the front of regular business because he's got another meeting that he's supposed to be at that's conflicting with this one. And then on the consent agenda, I need an adjustment to claims on item number two. It's an increase, it's to $2,125,982.39. So it's a net increase of $8,259.91.
With those changes, Madam Chair, I'll move to make those changes.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Before that, I'm just going to ask for any other public input on the agenda lineup. Okay, then, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Any public input on our consent agenda items as amended? All right, if not, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Harold, you want to come on up? And this item was item seven on our regular agenda.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for moving this item up for me. This item that's on there is our annual EMPG agreement with the state, which refunds money back to the county for my salary and administrative expenses. When you look at the contract, it says 50%. However, if you look further into the contract, it says up to a certain amount, and that amount being determined by the federal budget. And they don't get to give us those numbers until the federal budget is passed. When we budgeted this year for 26, we cut it back to 40%, and I think we should be right on task with that. So that's what we were kind of told to do by the state, so when Sheri and I finished up the budget, we did 40. So it's a little bit of a cut, but it's better than nothing at all. If you have any questions about it, I'll try and answer them.
All right, anybody have questions for Harold? All right, is there any public input on this agenda item?
Madam Chair, move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Thanks, Harold.
Madam Chair, one more thing I'd comment on is each quarter you should be getting in your share file, the document that says what I have left to accomplish for the year. It's a matrix that they keep track of, and there was three things left that I had to do, and two of them are already done, and some can't be done until the end of the fiscal year, like making reports and all that. So if you do have questions about that too, just don't hesitate to call me.
All right, thanks, Harold.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harold.
All right, we're going to move on to our second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, changing the zone of the properties described as lots one, two, and three, Nine Mile View Edition Northeast Quarter, Section Four, Township 99 North, Range 49 West, from the RC Rec. Conservation District and the A-1 Agricultural District to the PD Plan Development District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommends approval for 01. Location, it is parcels 099.49.04, J001, 099.49.04, J002, and 099.49.04, J003. The applicant is Rob Curtinbach, and the property owner is Nine Mile View LLC. Good evening, Toby.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Toby Brown, representing county planning. As was just stated, this is an application to change the zoning of three parcels in Lincoln County from a mixed zone of RC Rec. Conservation, A-1 Agricultural Zoning District, to PD Plan Development District. Subject property is approximately three miles to the east of the city of Harrisburg at the intersection of 273rd and 479th. This is within Dayton Township. As you can see, the connecting Lincoln County 2050 Conference Plan identifies these particular properties as future planned growth areas. This would be planned growth areas under the city of Harrisburg's comprehensive plan. As was noted also, is that there is some kind of split zoning on these properties. There's RC to the north, on the full one to the north, and on the mixed one to the middle, and then A-1 Agricultural for the rest of the properties. From a zoning perspective, there's no really difference between RC Rec. Conservation and A-1 Agricultural District. All the land uses are applicable in both zoning districts. This zoning goes back to the original zoning map of 1971, so I don't have any explanation of why those particular properties are zoned RC Rec. Conservation. Subject properties are plotted as three separate lots. All three properties are unapproved at this point in time. They range in size from just a little under three acres in size. This would be looking at some screenshots of the properties there. So the applicant did submit an application. These properties might be familiar to some of the board members, or there was a previous application for these particular properties. That application was under the previous comprehensive plan. With that application, the applicant and staff did conduct two neighborhood meetings on site, addressed, and I would say most, the majority of the neighbors did attend either one of those meetings, as well as Dayton Township representatives were also at that meeting. So the resulting out of those neighborhood meetings is the plan development before you this evening. And so again, within Lincoln County, we have conventional zoning districts, but we also have the ability to rezone to a plan development district, which is a non-conventional zoning district. It allows the county and the applicant and the neighbors to get together to define exactly what land uses would be allowed within there. Again, what we heard repeatedly from neighbors is what we heard at the previous application. They were concerned with over density, additional dwellings. So what this application does tonight, if approved, would only allow one single-family dwelling at each lot, which should really be complementary to what the existing development is within that area, as well as within the concept plan. At the request of Dayton Township, the two north lots will be a shared driveway, so there will only be two new driveways that will be created out of these three lots that will be developed. And then the land uses are within there. The only allowable accessory building would be 2,400 square feet, so that of course is quite a limitation of what we have for other zoning districts within the county, as well as the setbacks, as you can see, are much greater than what the typical setback is within the county. So those were all things that really we heard from the neighborhood meeting, as well as the applicant did develop covenants that were somewhat based on Lakeview Estates, so they're restrictive, also required that there be square footage with the single-family dwellings. But the neighbors, at one of the public meetings, or neighborhood meetings, we did go through each section of the covenants, and so the neighbors were appreciative of that and understanding of what the proposal would be. So with this application, as you're aware, is it does go to the Planning Commission first. Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing. We had no one speak in favor and opposition at that time. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezone to the plan development with a four to zero to one vote. So as of this meeting, staff has received no calls or comments regarding the application. We did post property and did go through that process. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you. The applicant is in attendance tonight as well.
All right, does anybody have any questions right now for Toby? Okay, is the applicant present?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, sorry to state your name and where you live.
Sounds good. My name is Rob Curtinbach. I'm the applicant for Nine Mile View LLC. My home address is 28784-472nd Avenue. It's a Beersford address. The subject property, as Toby mentioned, is in the southwest corner of 273rd and 479th Avenue, just south of Lake Elvin. I'm requesting the rezone of three lots from agriculture and RC 1, I think you called it, to plan development in order to allow for one single-family home on each lot. Each lot is approximately three acres in size. Some of you may recall that we applied for a rural residential rezone about 18 months ago. At that time, the previous comprehensive plan did not support additional housing in the area. While there was support from some county commission members, because it fits with what the rest of the neighborhood already is, the majority felt the request did not align with the existing plan and ultimately did not approve it. Although that outcome was not what we had hoped for, I respect the reasoning and understood the importance of following the guidance of the prior comprehensive plan. Since then, Lincoln County has adopted a new comprehensive plan, which does support additional housing at this location. With that change, this plan development request now has the support of the Lincoln County Planning and Zoning Staff, and now the support of Lincoln County Planning and Zoning Members. In addition, the city of Harrisburg, who does hold subdivision authority over this land, has continued to express their support. They sent a letter of support for the last go-round as well, but still remain in support. And Dayton Township, who has already approved the additional access points that Toby mentioned, they continue to show their support as well. As part of that comprehensive planning process, Toby recommended that I host a neighborhood meeting, which I was more than happy to do so. The first meeting was held on April 16th. The primary concern raised by the neighbors was the importance of creating covenants to ensure quality standards for any new homes built on these lots. This was already my intention from the beginning, similar to the three lots, that was always the intent. I never intended to subdivide it further than that. But I had these covenants drafted by the attorney shortly after that first meeting. Once completed, I mailed full copies of the covenants to the neighbors for review in advance of our second neighborhood meeting on June 25th. The neighborhoods expressed appreciation for the level of care and detail in the covenants. They seemed reassured that the future homes built on these sites would enhance and complement the natural beauty and quality of the surrounding area. I feel confident in saying that I now also have the support from the neighbors as well. It's also worth noting that I plan to build my own personal home on the lot just south of these three parcels from day one. My goal has been to create a development with strict standards, standards that I myself would be proud to live alongside. I want to be able to drive by beautiful homes on the way to and from my own home, just as the current neighbors deserve to do as well. The covenants will help ensure that vision is upheld. While the process has taken longer than I initially had hoped, I'm genuinely thankful for the journey. The updated comprehensive plan is working, and the neighborhood meetings were a great experience. I've enjoyed getting to know many of the people who live in this area. I look forward to one day becoming their neighbor. Thank you all for your time and thoughtful consideration of this rezoning request. I respectfully ask for your support in moving these three lots from agriculture to plan development zoning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do any other Commissioners have questions for our applicant tonight? Okay, if not, are there any proponents here who would like to give testimony? Any opponents? All right, if not, then I'm going to close testimony. Any discussion amongst the Commission?
Madam Chair, move to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
I have a second. With this caveat, I want to thank you for, Bob, I want to thank you for updating all of that. I know that it was a difficult time last time, but I think you got a much better plan, and I think the outcome will be favorable, as you said, to everybody. So thank you for doing that.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Curtinbach for working with the members of the neighborhood out there. If folks remember from about a year ago, he had half the neighborhood in here, but now, to his credit, he's swung the neighborhood to support him. And I think what that shows is that he was willing to do the hard work that it takes in order to get your neighbors on board with what you wanted to do. And so I want to thank him for that, and it just goes to show that, if you don't know it already, folks in Lincoln County are rightfully protective of their little slice of heaven. And so thank you for doing the hard work, and I'm glad we can support this tonight.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to our second public hearing, and it is an application for a temporary on-sale liquor license to operate outside the municipality for Prosper Country Warehouse and Event Hall for events to occur on August 30th, September 6th, and September 26th, 2025, located at the Prosper Country Warehouse and Event Hall, 46620-278 St., Lenox, South Dakota, 57039, Track 3A of Poppin' G's Edition in the southwest quarter of Section 28, Township 99 North, Range 51 West of the 5th PM, Lincoln County, South Dakota. Anybody here to speak on the application? Applicant or otherwise? All right, if there is no public comment on the application, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Schmidt, second from Commissioner Aaron's. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yeah.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next public hearing we have is to consider an application for the transfer of a retail on-sale liquor license to operate a municipality from Spring Creek Country Club to 4 Score LLC at the northwest quarter, northwest quarter, 26149 at 27122-480th Avenue, Harrisburg, South Dakota, 57032. Is the applicant present tonight?
Yes. So Dan Grevelis, 700 East Toma Court, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57105. So I'm asking to transfer the liquor license from Spring Creek Country Club to 4 Score LLC, and we are taking over the operations of it on September 1st.
All right, so that would be effective September 1st then, is what you're asking for? All right, anything else you want us to know?
As long as I'm here, I can give you a quick update. I don't know how many of you are golfers, but I know it's been a big part of Harrisburg and the community over the last few years, trying to keep away campgrounds and private courses. So our goal is to keep it a public course. It will always be a public course as long as we're there. That's been our goal from the start. We are going to get in there and do some quick updates. We're going to fix number 12, which is, if you ever hear about it, it's the top comment, it needs a new bridge, to turn that back into a par four. We're going to do that this fall. We're going to add new carts, windshield, GPS, coolers, we'll have those. We'll have, we're going to be fixing the cart paths, we're going to be fixing the bunkers, putting some effort into the current clubhouse until we'll probably be back here, and we're going to redo that into a new event center, get some weddings coming out there, and a new clubhouse, so we can generate some more taxes for you and more revenue for us. We will be putting a lot of that effort into it this year, so is there any questions I can answer?
Yeah, does anybody have any questions?
Dan, I don't have a question, but I just want to make a statement. On behalf of all those folks out there at Spring Creek and all those golfers, I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you for keeping that a golf course. There was a lot of work, a lot of effort by those people went into trying to preserve their neighborhood, preserve the identity of the neighborhood, so I just want to thank you for doing this.
Well, I really appreciate that. A lot went into them for us to be here, a lot was done by the neighborhood to keep that from being a campground. So when that came up for sale, we just couldn't wait to do it, and there's going to be a lot of upgrades, and there'll be more to come next year, so appreciate that.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, I just got to tell this very quick humorous story. So the guy who wanted to buy it before you, who I know very well, I had him on the phone, and we were talking about this, and I said, "Oh yeah, we'll see you at the county commission meeting when you need to transfer the liquor license." And he just, he could not believe me when I told him he'd have to come and file an application, and we had this go-around on the phone about this.
Really?
Yeah, so I'm glad to see you here, even if it's under these circumstances, so thank you.
There were eight groups that tried to do it and couldn't get it done, so I consider my family's going to be a big part of it, my kids, and I think you'll be appreciative, I think you'll like it, so.
Now, Dan, did Commissioner Aaron's get about four rounds of golf free for those nice conferences?
I'm not sure what your ethics policy are, but come on out there, we'll have an outing. Absolutely, let me know.
All right, anything else you want us to know tonight? All right, any other questions from the Commission? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any proponents of the application that would like to speak? All right, any opponents? All right, if not, I'd take a motion.
Move to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Here you go, you bet. All right, next on our agenda, we have to consider a resolution to establish the number of allowable off-sale and on-sale liquor license and the fees to be charged for the various classifications of licenses to be effective for the following year.
Good afternoon, Joe Meter, Deputy State's Attorney. This resolution is brought before you in an effort to make us akin to some of the surrounding counties in our area. Currently, the current system that we operate under is for us to evaluate whether the license that's going to go out is within the growth area of a municipality. If that is so, we would charge that individual $25,000. If it's outside the growth area, we would charge $175,000. This is going to change it to us just asking, what is the closest municipality in which this license is going to go to? If it's Sioux Falls, it's their rate. If it's Lenox, it's their rate. So that's what the counties around us are doing, that's what the approval tonight would do. If the Commission instead takes no action, it would remain as-is. This is a perpetual resolution, so no action would leave it as-is. So any questions for me?
Any other questions?
Joe, what kind of, how would this change, for example, a liquor license if it was outside of T. or Harrisburg?
Well, the only one that I wrote down for you is Sioux Falls is $200,000, and Lenox is $2,500. So it really just depends on the area. I'm sorry I don't have T. in front of me, but those were the two that I jotted down, so.
Other questions? All right, any public input on this agenda item?
Scott Montgomery, for you. I just got to understand, will you charge $175,000 if they're out here now, and then the new policy is going to be $2,500? Is that correct?
It's going to be based off the population of the nearest municipality.
Okay, but right now they charge $175,000 for the license? Is that correct?
If you're in the growth area by Sioux Falls, if you're in the growth area by Lenox, no, it was $25,000 once.
So if you are outside of the extraterritorial district of a municipality, it's $175,000. If you're within that district, it's $25,000.
Okay, so we're going to go from one, the county doesn't such need a move, we're going to go from $25,000 to $2,500. I think we're going backwards.
Any comments on that?
Any other public comment on the agenda item?
Yeah, hi, I, Nancy Kirsty, I own the Good Earth Farm, which is outside of a growth area in Lenox, South Dakota. I do hold a beer license and a wine license. I hold all sorts of licenses for all sorts of things that I do on my property. It is a, right now, I have to pay $175,000 to serve alcohol, to serve liquor on my property. If I was three miles the other direction, it would cost me $2,000. So I'm not contributing to your tax base because I can't afford $175,000 to pay for a one-time liquor license that has no value outside of me paying this. It's not an asset to me because there are so many available in the county of, in Lincoln County. So it's not like when I'm in Sioux Falls and I hold an asset because they're limited by population. So within the county, I think we have, what, like, three available?
Yeah.
Okay, and so I know that I'm a weird circumstance, right? I'm like four miles outside of, or no, I'm five miles outside of Lenox. I am equidistant from Davis. So if I was by Davis, what's the population of Davis, like 50? My liquor license would cost me $50, okay? Because that's the population. I'm closer to Lenox, that's my address, so it's going to cost me $2,000. If I were near Sioux Falls in that area, it would cost me $175,000, but it would also be an asset that I could sell to someone or transfer to someone for, I don't know what you paid for yours. But because there's so many available and because we don't have situations like mine very much within the county, it will never become an asset for me. So I contribute to the sales tax base because I have events and we do all kinds of stuff at our farm. I would invite you to come out and see what we do, it's really fun. But I am at a disadvantage because there are people that don't want to book weddings or that don't want to have corporate events because I have to come in front of these lovely people and ask for a liquor license, which I can do six times a year, and I have to do it in support of a nonprofit that I also run on my farm.
Ma'am, can you just finish up your conversation?
Yeah, I'm so sorry, yes. But that's the reason, I think, and I hope I explained it very well. I hope I didn't take anything away from you guys, and I really appreciate this being brought up at the Commission.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on this agenda item? All right, if not, is there a motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yep, go ahead.
So State's Attorney's Office has been working on this thing for six, nine months now, maybe almost going on a year. I understand Mr. Montgomery's concern, it's noted, but state law says we got to charge a liquor license fee for what the closest municipality charges. And so our ordinance here is an effort to get into compliance with South Dakota law, number one, but number two, it's about common sense. There's no, we live in a diverse county in the sense that we've got the state's number one city in terms of population to our north, and then we got cities like Davis and Schindler and others that have less than 35 people who live in them. And there's no reason why somebody who lives next to Lenox should be paying Sioux Falls liquor license fees. So this is just a move towards common sense and right sizing the marketplace, because like Nancy said, and I agree with every single word she said, she would have no incentive to even get a liquor license in the first place, but second of all, that liquor license down there at Good Earth Farm, and if you haven't been down there to eat some pizza, you should, there's no way in heck that that thing is worth $175,000. So I'm going to support this, and I think this just gets us into compliance with state law.
Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
Your point was well made about being an asset. Had we set a strict limit like the city of Sioux Falls does, that becomes a very tangible asset. I mean, they got a bid for that. I mean, you know, it may be $200, but people have paid way beyond that just to get one. So if we had that character here, and you had one, and someone wanted to have it, then that would be a different market, but we don't live in that kind of mode. I support that as well. I think it's only fair, and I like the idea that you're a sales tax, and hopefully someday, maybe Lincoln County will get to have a sales tax, so we can work our way out of some of our deficits.
All right, any further discussion? If not, Alicia, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yeah.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. All right, next item is to consider a motion to All right, next item is to consider a motion to approve the agreement with Henry Carlson Construction for asphalt replacement on West Street related to Lincoln County Justice Center for 361,000, 361-810. So they're just looking for direction on this, and so I'm bringing it back here. We had talked about doing the asphalt to the south entrance of the new justice center because that's where the sanitary was going in and what needs to be ripped out. Now they're using the rest of that road to the north. There's gonna be trucks on it when the courthouse, when the justice center opens. The sheriff's office will be using it, there'll be truck traffic there for bringing in supplies and what have you to that, to the back entrance. And I think, you know, just the overall aesthetic and for the folks that are living along that street, the city has not, they indicated they don't really have any plans in the foreseeable future to extend that sanitary sewer because of the cost. So in discussions that I've had, Commissioner Otten, feel free to chime in, we're recommending that we spend this money so, because that road is just terrible and it's just gonna continue to deteriorate. And so since we can use part of, we can use some of the bond money to go ahead and make those repairs to that road, I guess that's what I'm recommending, and Commissioner Otten, anything you want to add?
Agree, 100%.
Okay, so anybody have any questions about it?
How many feet is this road?
I do not know how many feet the road is. I just know that this is what the cost is under the bid step.
Is that about a half mile?
Yeah, I would say.
It could be about a half mile.
I'd say it probably is about a half mile.
Madam Chair, does this fit within, I know that so far Justice Center has been on time and under budget. So does this fit comfortably within that?
It does.
Okay. Madam Chair, I've.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for public comment first. Does the commission have any other questions right now?
I do want to add, though, that if we do this and then the city of Canton decides to upgrade it and put in sewer or something else, then they are responsible for refixing the road on them, not us.
Correct. All right, any public input on this agenda item?
And this is a second access off of our ground?
Yeah, but it would be for that second access. So it's gonna, there's gonna be paving up behind that, on the property that goes around, so this would just connect everything. All right, is there a motion?
Also moved.
Second, Otten?
I've got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes, motion carries, thanks everyone. Next, we have a resolution to determine the minimum acre requirements for ag land classification. Good evening, Carla.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Carla Gosin, Director of Equalization. Before you this evening is a resolution regarding the South Dakota Codified Law 10-6-112 with subsection two, which allows each county to adopt a minimum acre requirement. By the way of the background, in 2009, prior to the productivity method coming into play for valuing of agricultural land being implemented, Lincoln County Commission changed the minimum acre requirements from 20 acres to 40 acres. Due to some confusion during this past year's appeals, I am respectfully requesting that the ordinance be updated to reaffirm and refresh the practice already in place in Lincoln County. I do have some just additional comments just for consideration.
Sure, if you want to go ahead with those and then if the commissioners have questions, then they can ask.
Just keep in mind the DOE is unbiased in this opinion of the commission. This is something set by the commission. I was hired to uphold all the laws and rules and ordinances that are passed that affect the valuation, and I'll continue to do so. I do have some real life examples of what a shift, how a shift could occur once a parcel goes from non-egg to agricultural. And there's about 130 to 150 parcels that could be affected by switching the ordinance from the 40 acre policy down to a 20 acre policy. So I do have all those stats if you're interested in those.
Does anybody have questions for Carla?
Carla, that doesn't affect our 40-40 rule, does it, for housing? Housing verifications or anything?
All right, any public input on this agenda item? Okay, if not, can I get a motion?
Oh, he's got.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you moving over there.
Jerry Miller from Worthing, South Dakota. We live right in town, 303 South Louise. But we also own some land outside of town. I just would like clarification, there's a 2,500 minimum requirement of agricultural income. And my understanding was you had to meet that or the acre requirement. Is that correct in my understanding or not?
That is correct.
Okay, the reason I bring that up is we have less than eight acres. We do meet the 2,500 requirement, but it is agricultural land. And I want to make sure that our land won't be impacted by that. We have no building eligibility, all we want to use it for is farming, and I just wanted to clarify that.
2,500, yeah.
That's my understanding, thanks for coming up, sir. Any other public input on this agenda item?
I'd just like to know how much revenue this is gonna generate.
I'll, I'll allow, if somebody wants to come up and answer that, you sure can, but you're not under any obligation to do that right now. Okay. Any other public input on this agenda item?
Yeah, thank you. Senator Kevin Johnson, District 16, 27808, 484th Avenue. And I think Mr. Miller's questions were the same ones that I had because, you know, we look at that 2,500 exemption versus 40 acres. But one of the things I was a legislator, I'm concerned about, because I have to, you know, I have issues statewide. We have 66 different counties that can have 66 different classifications of ag land. And it's troubling to me that we don't have a statewide definition for everybody, that each county can do that arbitrarily. I understand what you're saying, that it's the practice that's been, but has it been, yeah, this is a rhetorical question. Has it been applied equally and fairly to everyone? I do know a gentleman in 2011 that had an issue because he ended up inheriting some land through small pieces alone. He raised sheep and he ended up losing his tax exemption even though he was still making 2,500 because two sections of his land weren't, two pieces of his land were not making that 2,500. It was just on one piece. So another two pieces, it went to, or to regular tax base. So I just want to make sure that we're gonna apply this fairly, equally, across the board. And I would make a suggestion, I'd like to see it 20 acres, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other public input on this agenda item?
Carla, did you say the impetus behind this, oh, excuse me?
Say that again?
The impetus behind moving from 40 to 20, what was the, what was the rationale for that?
I believe it was because of the implementation of the productivity method. And at that time, many counties looked at the acre requirement because of the productivity would have such a large impact in the valuation. So they tightened up the agricultural limitation. So back in 2011, it wasn't 2,500 of valuation, it was a third of your income. So the laws have changed many times with the agricultural qualifications over the years. And just to, just to clarify a statement that one of the gentlemen just mentioned, of the 66 counties, 39 have 20 acre rule, the 20 acre rule. And then 27 have over 20 acre rule. So 40% of the counties across the county, or across the state have over 20 acres as their minimum acre requirement. So there's not 66 different ones, there's, there's just a couple.
All right, thank you, Carla.
You're welcome.
Any other public input on this agenda item? That's not you, Schmidt.
Hey. Go ahead, Linda. Linda Montgomery, February, South Dakota. I, just listening to this very quickly, I would like it to keep it as is, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input on the agenda item?
Ryan McKinnon. When a couple of us were reading this the other day, the form before this one, that's where a lot of the confusion lies, I think. Because it says 40 acres plus the minimum dollar amount you had to have. You.
I don't, if it was, it wasn't meant to be that way.
That's where some of us were very confused, I think.
Could you repeat that again?
So it's, in addition to be classified agricultural land, the land must also, land must meet one of the following as well. So even if you had the 40, or how, we had this figured out where, it was, some of us were worried that if a person was on less than 40, that you, you wouldn't get the exemption because you have to have the 40 plus the exemption, plus the, the 2,500.
No.
Is the way a lot of us were reading this.
So right now, the first criteria that needs to be met to go on to the second and the third criteria is it has to be devoted to agricultural purposes. Once it meets that criteria, then it's one of two, acres or income.
Okay. Yep.
And that's just the Reader's Digest version of it. But I mean, goes in and talks about management units and so on and so forth.
A lot of us were just very confused reading that.
Thanks, Carla. Any other public input on the agenda item?
Good evening, Sarah Stever, 46850, 276th Street in Lennox. I would like to speak on behalf of the 20 acre minimum. I think encouraging more people to participate in agriculture would be helpful. So anything we can do to do that, especially in our proximity to Sioux Falls, I think would be wise, thank you. And I also would be curious, the 39 counties that do have the 20 acres as the minimum, what their rationale was might be good information, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? All right, if not, can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna move to approve, but move to approve is 20 acres, not the 40.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion amongst the commission?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to note a couple of things here. We have a tremendous number of people in rural Lincoln County who are engaged in agricultural production. And I call it micro ag. They are involved with, like Jerry Miller said, raising sweet potatoes. Sweet corn, excuse me. And we have people who have apiaries, which are bee production, which is really essential to creating a productive environment for agriculture these days. We've got people involved in domestic and exotic animal production. I had, I put in a Facebook post today, I thought it was llamas, but I, it was pointed out to somebody. It's, what is it, it's the other one?
Alpaca.
Alpacas, I think she's just south of town here, isn't she? So we've got alpaca production. And, and I think a lot of this micro egg production is definitely stimulated or generated because we're in close proximity to Sioux Falls and there's a marketplace. There's, a marketplace has been created for all of this. And unfortunately, the 40 acre rule, you know, when you kind of think 40 acres, you're thinking 40 acres of pasture, row crop. Well, that's just not how people in the greater Sioux Falls or Lincoln County area produce, you know, are producers anymore like that. They, they tend to produce these much smaller niche crops that there's a real marketplace for. So I think it's high time that we move from 40 down to 20. We've got 130 affected parcels or so. We hear this every year, somebody comes in and says, why, you know, they appeal their taxes, why can't I do this? Well, because of the 40, 40 acre rule. Well, I think we've got plenty of ammunition there to suggest, you know, like, hey, we can give some of those people relief, maybe not all of them. And then the other thing is, we've got 39, 39 counties across state using the 20 acre rule. So that's some pretty good precedent there. But, and I think ultimately, when it comes to property taxes, people are looking for relief and they probably deserve some more relief. And this is kind of the economic development that we would like to invest in, is people able to keep more of their, more of their own income so they can reinvest it in them, their operation and their families. And so I'm gonna be supportive of the 20 acre rule here, it's high time we move towards this. And, you know, we gotta get with the 21st century here in terms of how micro egg production works, thank you.
Carla, can you come back up for a second? Are you making a recommendation one way or the other?
No, I'm unbiased with the decision. I will just adhere to whatever you decide to do with this resolution. But I do think it's noteworthy on noting that there would be a tax shift. When you take a bucket of non-agricultural valuation and you shift it over into the agricultural valuation side, a lot of valuation is lost. So in this case, I've done those statistics, and this is just on the land portion alone. It's about a 54 million dollar shift in, from the non-agricultural side going away. And then a small portion, because agricultural land is valued, you know, at a lesser value. So there would be a value placed onto the agricultural land, but we're talking about 500,000 in taxes that would be shifted from the non-agricultural property owners. And then if you divide that by how many parcels are affected, you're looking at an increase for each taxpayer between 17 and 22 dollars a year. Just on the, just on the land portion alone. Now that's worst case scenario because that's just on the land portion of the valuation. That's if all 130 parcels plus or minus were to revert over to the agricultural status. But keep in mind on any, you know, if you're a bee farmer and you have eight acres, you can still qualify for the 25, with the 2,500, so you don't need 40 acres. You can still qualify with the 2,500 requirement on that. I just, I think that's noteworthy, that it could be a tax shift onto our, probably our owner occupied properties just by this resolution alone.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Does anybody have any other questions for Carla?
I have a comment.
Well, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I understand what you said, Commissioner Erns, I'm not in support of this. I think that we have established the 40 acre rule. I, in good conscience, could not vote for this because I can't tell you how many people have come in and have been close to 40 acres and we have held the line by saying, I'm sorry, you didn't make it. The other part is what Carla just mentioned. If I own 20 acres and I want to have it considered to be ag, I gotta raise 2,500 worth of whatever on it. Whether I'm selling sheep wool or whether I'm selling anything, I can get the exemption without changing this rule down to ag at 20 acres. So I'm not gonna be in support of that, I'm gonna keep it as is. To me, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you, Commissioner, any other discussion amongst the commission? All right, if not, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
No.
Schmidt?
No.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
No.
Consider an alternate motion?
I'll make the motion to keep it at 40 acres.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, will you call the roll, Alicia?
Commissioner Erns?
No.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
No.
Landy?
Yes, motion carries. Yes, motion carries. All right, and then we'll move on to item eight on our agenda. We have a report on the auditor's account, uh, within the county treasurer's update.
Good evening, Commissioners. Franny Hofer, Lincoln County Treasurer. Um, I am just giving an update. Last month, I was in here to tell you of a discrepancy on our spreadsheet. I have gone ahead and verified that it was reported twice in the fund investments, and I have corrected that spreadsheet, so our spreadsheets now match what is in the system that is cracked.
All right, awesome. Found it. Anybody have any other questions for Franny? All right. Thank you. Any public input on that agenda item? All right, if not, we'll move on to item nine on our agenda. To consider a motion to permanently move the Third Regular Board of Commissioners meeting of each month to six-thirty P.M. Commissioner Otten?
Yes, um, I have been the proponent of this for almost five years before I came on the, um, the board. Um, and so, um, I'm looking at what has happened, um, in the past, and the very first one that we had was the, um, uh, the CAFO repeal, and the, this was fall. And so, I'm, from then on, I've kinda been very disappointed in the turnout for the night meetings, so, um, and since this came on the agenda, I've had, um, people text me, call me, and saying that, um, they really don't wanna travel at night during the winter. Um, and so, um, I, I don't know whether, um, and, and then I had someone else say, "Well, you know, even John Lombo's team would have to be here if that was happening, like ice or whatever." And we're, we're in the middle of nowhere trying to get back to wherever you live. So, I'm looking at, um, the risk management issues, and, and then we also have a standing conflict, um, that, the joint meeting with, um, the Sioux Falls City Council at seven o'clock on this very same date. And we don't always have that meeting, but it conflicts because then we don't know what to do with our meeting here, and that happens in September. Um, we have, we have a confirmed meeting already that it's in Sioux Falls, cause we, we go back and forth from Sioux Falls to Canton with our, um, uh, standing joint meeting. So, um, I'm conflicted, um, number one, not having the people here that, you know, said that they were going to be here, um, at night, um, even though, you know, we can get that on video all the time. And so, I, I don't know whether we should just, you know, get rid of the night meeting or, um, or make it go down from, like, May to August. And so, um, I guess I'm looking for other input.
I guess for my part, I mean, I drive down from Sioux Falls and, and these, some of these meetings are gonna be, like, right around the holidays in November, December. We do have that standing meeting, and then I also have concerns about, um, maintaining the sidewalks and everything outside after hours and the extra costs that that would involve. So, I can support, you know, and, and some of the folks, like, you know, I'm very used to having our civil, uh, chief civil deputy here, but school started and, you know, people have other things to do in the evening that they need to attend to, including our employees. So, I'm fine doing it if we do it from May to August. And like I said, we're not gonna be able to do it next month because we already have a conflict, so, um, there's a lot of moving parts to it. So, whether we just leave it at eight-thirty or we do it, um, for those nicer summer months, um, you know, when it's still light out for people to travel, I'm fine with that, too.
Madam Chair, I was looked at this, um, I'll echo the idea of not having it in winter time, because there's, you got a lot of people on the roads, and we never know the weather this winter. If you looked at the future, could be a tough one. But I was looking at going April, May, June, July, August. So, that's five months, that's almost half the year. Uh, April, the last meeting in April is right next to May, so we've had showers and flowers. So, um, my, I, I would say April, May, June, July, and August. That would be, uh, that'd be my... I, I could support that. I don't know if you wanna motion to that effect or whatever.
I could...
Public comment.
I could support that, but I'm gonna take public comment.
Madam Chair.
Public comment, yeah.
Uh, how many schools have basketball games on Friday nights during the winter? I went to the T. Denny Sanford Arena, fourteen thousand people in the middle of the winter were walking on, walking on ice and sidewalks to go see a concert. This isn't a concert. This isn't a basketball game. This is people's government. And we, as elected officials, this is what you sign up for. I better not see one single commissioner walking at night on a frozen sidewalk if you're gonna vote to cancel these meetings at night. You better be inside by five o'clock and you better not go anywhere. I don't wanna see any single commissioner walking on ice ever. We need to hold...
Commissioner Erns, with that...
We need to hold...
Mr. Mayor, you know...
Just a minute, let Commissioner Erns briefly finish his comment.
Okay.
We need, we need to keep these meetings at night because they have been well-attended. You go back in the video and look at it. And number two, we need to create the opportunity for public input, and that's what we've done here. We do all our hearings at the last, uh, meeting of the month, and they've been very well-attended. So, I intend to just keep it as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schmidt?
Well, Commissioner Erns, I, maybe you were at a different evening meetings, but I've been here at evening meetings where we've had, um, two or three people consistently, and those individuals that are dedicated to come to our meetings, I haven't seen a lot of new faces coming in. So, I mean, we can pontificate and say all that kinda stuff, and I understand that, but when I go out, if I choose to go to a, a ballgame, uh, wherever, uh, that's my choice, and, uh, I, I, I take effort, effort, deference to you on that because we're thinking about a lot of people driving, we got our own staff situation. So, I, I'm not, I'm not saying that we're denying the public an ability to come and speak. Uh, if there is a situation that warrants an evening meeting, we would surely have one, but I think we're looking at, uh, in my mind, a little safety situation, and we've got six months, if you wanna eat in September, six months on, six months off. I don't see personally anything wrong with that, but that's just my particular point of view. I may be in the minority.
Madam Chair, I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
Um, weather is morning, noon, and night, it really don't matter. I mean, you can have ice in the morning, afternoon, evening. I believe that, um, this whole deal should work good this way. If people wanna come, they come. Um, I think we leave it just the way it is, and, um, and we can make it an agenda if people need to come at night, and we can have it at that particular time as opposed to a morning. So, I think I'm good with the way it is, and I'd like to keep it that way.
Thank you for your comments. Any other discussion? All right, if not, I would consider a motion.
Public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment.
On public.
Good evening, Linda Montgomery from February, South Dakota. I am one of those that does come to the eight-thirty meetings. Many times in this seating, there are two of us, two citizens, and the rest are staff. I'm sorry, but we have more people at night than we do during the day. And I, I, I just, um, I, I get it, but you know, you've canceled commission meetings during the day for weather? You know? That's just part of the, the thing. I mean, this, these are... These commission meetings are important to the public. And they deserve at least one meeting a month to be in the evening. You, what you did, what, four months ago? And I don't know, I mean, the last three commission meetings that were here, the first one we had was huge. Yes, we had a big draw. But you think about it, I, in the morning meetings, if there are more than two citizens there, wow, that's a crowd. No, that is just making it easy for you, but hard for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public input?
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Johnson, Will Can, again. Um, I'd just like to remind everybody that a hundred and five of us put our lives on the line every Sunday and Monday night, and every Thursday and Friday night, come home from peer in all kinds of blizzards, whether that has stranded people, whether that has made people stay at farm homes, whether that has kept us in peer all week as we get and help get home, and the thousands and thousands of people that drive overnight or, and come and stay that night so they can testify in the morning. I really, I'm just dumbfounded. I've been to Moore County Commission meetings now in this year than I have probably in the last three years, cause I can't make it here in the morning, cause I have a job. I have things to do. I'm very appreciative of this time that you guys give us. I think it's about, it's one of the best moves I think you guys ever did. But I'm just not buying the weather thing, I'm sorry. I've been nine years in the world, I've been putting my life on the line for all of you people. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Any other public input?
Alan Rainfold, February, South Dakota. And I would like to comment that there are so many people who have a very hard time making it to a meeting during the day. Those people do need to have a right to come here and make it to an evening meeting. And sometimes, even if there aren't many people that show up, an issue can be ultra-important, and it makes a huge difference to sometimes a lot of people in the county, that that person can have the right to show up at this evening meeting. So, I'd really appreciate it if we had this evening meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Sarah Stever, Lenox, South Dakota. Um, please keep the evening meeting if you can. Uh, I'm really grateful for it, and as I mentioned, I was really grateful to not be spending all of my vacation time with you, but indeed, if you can keep it at least once a month, I'd really appreciate it.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Scott Montgomery, February, South Dakota. We live in South Dakota. We have weather here. And, uh, I think it's been great that you guys have, have gone out on a limb and done this. If it was up to me, all your meetings would be at night. They used to be. It hasn't been that many years ago, the meetings were at night. Look at the crowd here tonight, do you see that during the day? No. There's way more people here at night than there is during the day, and I think, I would appreciate if you guys would consider that. Let us keep coming here. I know, I don't work, so I, I can show up here anytime, day or night, but there's a whole lot of people that can't be here that would like to be here. And, you know, you're representing us, and let, let us come here and partake in this thing, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Beth Quail, Harrisburg. Um, I assume these meetings are on video, right? So, right now, we have, probably have people watching on video at home, and maybe they're not here to be able to come up and speak, but at least they're hearing what's being, um, discussed, and they are, you know, know what's going on. So, I ask you two to please keep at least one evening meeting during the month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan McKinnon. Um, I own my own business, so I can set my own schedule along with quite a few people in the audience. It's a lot easier for us to come to a night meeting, and we don't have to go to a nine-to-five. Um, and to say that there's no new faces, there's three of them out there tonight that I haven't seen in a meeting at all, and they made it tonight. So, and Commissioner Erns took the words out of my mouth with his speech.
I have a tendency to do that.
Darab Zug, Harrisburg, and I just wanna say thank you for being here tonight. I, too, did not have to take PTO today.
Carla Luns, Canton. Uh, I just wondered, I actually had in my notes, um, for something else I was gonna speak and I'm in comment, a thank you to you guys for having the evening meetings, and I thank, um, Commissioner Otten for bringing that forward when she did. I do think, uh, for, for obvious reasons, there are so many people that do like to be here, um, that cannot come during the day because they're working or, you know, for other reasons, and it just, it gives an option for people that, you know, if they can't be here in the day, they can come at night, or if they can't make them evening meeting, they can come, you know, next week for public comment or whatever. So, please consider keeping the evening meeting, and, and to Commissioner Erns' comments, uh, we were actually saying the same thing, that there are football, basketball concerts, going out to eat, meeting friends, and if the weather's bad, you cancel. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input?
Hi, Amy Harms, Sioux Falls. Um, I, again, agree with what Jerry said. Um, I was actually hoping we were going to, um, look at more evening meetings, not cutting the evening meetings. Um, it is virtually impossible for people who work during the day to get here for meetings, and this is our only opportunity. I have been to every one of the night meetings, and this is only the second one that I've been to that I've been able to sit in this room, because the other ones have been out there because it's so full. So, to say that nobody was here, I don't know where you guys were, cause I was here and I was out there. So, I would encourage you to keep those, the meetings nightly and even add another one.
Any other public input?
Good evening, Commissioners. Michelle Johnson, Canton, South Dakota. Um, I would like to echo everything that the people have set up here about keeping the evening meetings. I, too, was at the last one, and I also sat out there. So, I, and I've also, in the last couple of years, you guys recognize me now, have been here during the daytime ones, when I am one of a couple of people. So, I think keeping them in the evenings would be the best way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input?
Jerry Miller, Worthing, South Dakota. My favorite ancient text says that there's wisdom among a multitude of counselors, and I've been encouraged, as I've listened to the people tonight, people haven't always agreed, but their disagreements gave insight to our commissioners, so our commissioners were more informed for making a decision. The people are important in playing a part in that, and thank you for taking the time to listen, and I believe this evening meeting provided excellent opportunity for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public input? All right. So, closed public input on that agenda item. And I'm, I'm listening to everybody, and I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, and we haven't done this through the winter. I'm looking at the calendar. Um, our meeting at night's gonna be the night before the Wednesday of Thanksgiving. It's gonna be December twenty-third, so I'm really interested, I'm kinda interested to see if, um, what the attendance looks like through the winter months. So, perhaps we could continue to do this for another six months and then reassess it.
Madam Chair.
To get everybody kinda on the same page and keep this meeting going and see how it truly is throughout a whole year.
Madam Chair, I, I'm not gonna fall on my sword for this one, cause I, I don't find evening meetings. Um, I think that as long as I've been on the commission, we've talked about it, and if that's what the, if, if that's what it takes, fine. I could, I can come to an evening meeting as easy as you can come to an eight-thirty meeting. It doesn't make any difference to me, so.
We'll have here. We have that standing meeting, so...
I think we should continue on to this year and...
And we can always reschedule if we have to.
Well, we won't reschedule the standing meeting that we have with Sioux Falls. We'll have to reschedule ours, so for instance, in September, we will not have our evening meeting, because we do have a hearing in Sioux Falls.
In October.
Or is it October?
October.
Okay, so we won't have it in October, and then if weather comes up where we can do it, then we'll just have to...
There it is, even in the morning. If the weather's really bad, we won't do it.
I do want everybody to understand that there is additional costs with rescheduling public hearings, so... So, that's, that's something else to consider as well, as well as the additional cost of having staff come in to clear sidewalks and that sort of thing, and if we have to pay them overtime. So.
Madam Chair, did I make the motion?
Everybody just needs to keep that in mind. You sure can.
I would like, I really want to thank everybody for their input because we needed this input from you. Because I have been an advocate for evening meetings for almost five years before I got elected up here. So, I am thankful for Linda Montgomery. She brought it up in one of our meetings to have the night meeting, and that's when we got it scheduled. So, I thank you all for your input, and I would like to just make a motion that we continue with what we're doing and then reevaluate in another six months like we did for this one.
Okay. That makes sense to me. I have a second from Commissioner Putnam. All right. Alicia, we call the roll.
Madam Chair, discussion.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I'm glad that the commissioners are at least taking this step. That's positive. I'm glad there were people here to push back on their natural inclination. If they were allowed to and permitted to, they'd make it more difficult for the public to come, but because you were here tonight, they pushed back. You all in the audience pushed back on them. Their natural instinct is to want to close government off and make it more difficult for you to attempt.
Commissioner Aaron's, that is not a true statement. That is out of order.
You can disagree.
No, you can get off your campaign podium.
You can disagree.
I'm sorry. You're out of order.
I understand that it hurts you.
No, it does not hurt me. You are out of order.
For what? For saying things you don't like?
I've, we have a motion and a second. I'm closing discussion. Alicia, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
I'm glad that I can speak and say yes.
Alicia, we call the roll. Thank you.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, everybody forgot who got up and spoke tonight.
Thank you.
All right. And then we have opportunity for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Anyone wanting to come up should do so now.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight again. I just wanted to talk briefly about elections, and President Trump recently announced his intention to eliminate mail-in voting and voting machines. President Trump's plan includes signing an executive order to help bring honesty to the 2026 midterm elections. I'm thankful to the work of South Dakota Candace for bringing to light issues with our South Dakota elections. And recently, I've spoken to our state's attorney's office as well as county officials and our state legislative staff about the uncertified laptops, specifically the money-making county. I know now that this issue is before the board of elections. Obviously, for many, many years, our county, our state, and our nation got by, well, without laptops and without voting machines. This is an important opportunity, this is an opportunity for Lincoln County to lead by responding to your constituents, number one. Two, ensuring that any equipment presently used is certified with the EOC. And three, planning ahead to when President Trump implements things like the elimination of voting machines. If Lincoln County can act decisively and respond to President Trump's initiative, you could lead the state by example. This would include enacting a new system of voting for Lincoln County that operates separately from voting machines. And I thank you for your consideration to this important matter and your swift attention to it. And I also thank you for your service.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you, Commissioners. Kevin Johnson, again. I can echo what Carla said, that when, when there's so much controversy over four laptops in the entire state, and when people don't feel like they're being listened to, and it isn't just here, it's in other counties too, they come to us. And for four laptops, it just seems that such a simple fix to get certified laptops at the very least and just put that behind us. I don't understand the resistance. I don't care if it's a $3,000 cost for that computer. I don't know what that, I've been in IT most of my life. I don't know what laptops cost, and I know what certified computers are. But when ESNS machines say that their machines have to be certified, those laptops have to be certified, it's such a simple fix. I mean, I, it befuddles me that we just don't get a certified computer and put at least that issue behind us. It's so easy. I just, I'm trying to get to all four counties that are having the same issue because I, honestly, I just don't understand not buying and certifying our computers. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public input tonight?
Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. Kevin and Carla took a lot of my words, but I want to read a page out of page two of the ENS Election System Management System Manual. United States Election Assistance Commission notification for approved voting systems. In accordance with the United States Election Assistance Commission, the EAC Testament Certification Program Manual, version two, ESNS hereby notifies the purchaser that any changes or modifications to an EAC-approved voting system which has not been tested or certified, which the laptop the four counties have, by the EAC will void the EA certification for such EAC-approved voting system. Please prove to me that those laptops are certified. According to EAC, they are not. Now, I'd like to read a little something else on hand counting. Hand counting does not require cybersecurity, EAC certification, expensive machines, expensive software agreements, software updates performed by outside vendors, equipment storage security, concealed audit trails, lawsuits for the audit trail, paid EMS employees in county elections, test decks, pre-election testing, barcoded ballots, QR codes, computers programmed by outside vendors, flash drives programmed by outside vendors, extensive training never provided by ESNS or South Dakota officials, proprietary software code not available to the public, forensic examination machines, and counting is easy and expensive, audible, transparent, verifiable, public, and secure. I ask that we go to act of hand counting. It's easy, it's cheap, it's simple. Thank you.
Good evening again. Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. Well, Carla and Kevin took a lot of my words out. But I was always wondering after two weeks ago when we brought it here, and I was wondering now, how is this going to be spinned? That we have a uncertified laptop? And, and how can that possibly be okay with what they sent us? Doing a little bit of research, apparently there's some components that might be the same on the two computers. The problem with that is, if you've ever had a prescription, that you got the brand name of that prescription, and it was going fine, and then the pharmacy said, oh, you have to go to generic, and you start taking that medication when they say this is 100% the same medication, and then you don't get the same response. Now, if we're trying to compare an uncertified computer to what the EAC has certified and say they're the same thing, because gee, they're both computers, and they, they might have, you know, the same thing, like, you know, your medication, the brand name and the, the other one, the generic one. Yeah, they have some of the same stuff in them, but they don't act the same. I encourage you, I told you two weeks ago at the commission meeting, that this is something that you guys are going to have to stand and be brave. This vendor has been a vendor that has never been challenged. They have told lies, like, four, four and a half years ago, it was the CVRs, you know, nobody knew that they were even there, let alone the audit logs, even the auditors. Even the past Secretary of State, Jason Garrett, who brought so many machines in, he just blew up South Dakota with machines. He comes here on an educational tour that Sherry put on and said with the CVRs that we said are public, he says, I don't know what the big deal about CVRs is or the audit law. The big deal was, we could have been auditing our elections all the time with those CVRs and cash vault records because they were meant to audit our elections so that we could have confidence. I hold ESNS responsible for that debacle. You know, we had lawsuits then, yeah, because we were trying to show you that they weren't following the law. They weren't following EAC certification standards. Now, we come to this problem, and I believe that they didn't tell you. They didn't tell the auditors. Nobody, you know, you get handed a receipt and they said, yeah, here's your computer, and you go, oh, okay. But how many people actually go and look to see, did we get the right computer? The only one, the only auditor in this state that did that was from Minnehaha. And she came to the commissioners, and first off, she said, the computer I got when I got elected is not up to standard for our elections. I need to order a new computer, which she did. ESNS provided her with an uncertified laptop, which she took to the commissioners.
Can you finish up your comments, please?
That she took to the commissioners and they said, use it. This is not something that we want in this county. I want you to stand up and be tall and proud and stand for your citizens.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to come up? All right. If not, then I will close the opportunity for public comment. Any Commissioners like to make reports tonight? I know Commissioner Putnam, I think you have a report, don't you?
Oh, just talking about the groundbreaking ceremony for the Shabab Jewish Community Centers. It was nice being there. Commissioner Otten and Commissioner Schmidt and I, we were there, got to join in on that whole deal. And then one other thing, our IT, Jake. I had a problem with, with, I've got an auto dealer's license, and so the state of South Dakota, they're having a problem trying to take care of the auto dealers. And so, I was talking to one of the dealer inspectors on a little problem, and he had me send a picture over some secured deal. I don't have no clue, but, you know, they spent about 50 million trying to make this all work, and that didn't work. So, I call up our AI guy here, Lincoln County, and I'm talking to him. I send it to him, and he looks at it, and of course, he's a little confused because it's state, not Lincoln County. So, I said, well, let me, let me talk as Commissioner Putnam then. And Jake smiled then, big smile, and he took care of it in a matter of seconds that the state couldn't do. So, we've got to give him a big round of applause, and thank God we have somebody as good as he is. And now, the state of South Dakota is a little bit further along in their endeavor of not having much in the way of the title problems. So, that's about the extent of what I want to say.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other Commissioners have reports they'd like to make? Yeah, go ahead.
I want to do a shout out to Carrie Elling, our HR director and her team, for a great employee appreciation day on Tuesday, August 12th. It was great food, great fellowship. And lots of games. Also, I want to do a shout out for Jake Oakland and our IT team for their work dealing with the statewide outage for almost two days last week, along with all the Lincoln County offices here that were affected, like Franny Hofer in the Treasurer's Office, et cetera. And a statement went out to reporters last Tuesday that the service disruption was due to a power outage at the state data center that caused a hardware failure, and the incident was not related to a cybersecurity event. Many state phone lines, as many of us know, were also affected. And lastly, I have a huge shout out to Lincoln County Sheriff's Department responding to three days of accidents in the same location during the first week of school on South Dakota Highway 115 near the Harrisburg High School. Day one, they had a five-vehicle crash, a three-vehicle crash, a two-vehicle crash. Day two, they had a four-vehicle crash, a two-vehicle crash, and on day three, they had another two-vehicle crash. So, shout out to them for trying to keep those people safe around Harrisburg.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other reports this evening?
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I appreciate Commissioner pointing out the accidents situation that occurred on South Dakota Highway 15 last week. There were seven accidents, 18 people were involved. I've been in contact with Sheriff's Office, but also the state DOT and the regional Travis Dressin, the regional engineer. Just so the public is aware, the Department of Transportation did meet with the Sheriff's Office, the Harrisburg City Engineer, as well as the Harrisburg School Department, or School Board. And they've addressed some of these issues. First and foremost, what the DOT has done, because the state is in control of that section of road, that it, county does not have jurisdiction. We're not in charge of speed limits or the design or construction of that section of the road. But the first thing that they've done is they've implemented single, signal timing changes in order to accommodate for the number of cars who are backed up going from south to north who want to turn into the high school. So, hopefully, by increasing the length of the green arrow there when you turn left if you're headed south, there'll be less of a backup, so that's positive. They're also doing a speed study. They're doing a traffic study. Initial appearances are, it's not necessarily a speed issue, but nonetheless, the, I believe, the Harrisburg School Board did make a request to the State Department of Transportation to get a lower speed limit in that section of road to go from 55 to 45. And so, hopefully, everybody is now on top of this issue. It's almost unprecedented, the number of accidents that happened there in a short period of time. Very concerning, and so, I'm glad that all the necessary parties are starting to work together to get a handle on this thing now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other reports tonight?
Madam Chair. Just an update. I was down and visited with the dairy, Down Duck Dairy down there, and all of the damage that they had, all of their milking parlors were either damaged or destroyed, and they're putting them back together. They have a bio-digester that was destroyed, and they have successfully put that back. And I just wanted to put an update in talking. We had all these reports of 14,000 cows being moved, you know, over time. The actual number of dairy cows that was moved was 2,000, and they did successfully find places for them. And, I mean, they're putting, they're putting it back together, taking a long time, but they should be up and running maybe by, fully by Thanksgiving. They figure they'll have everything back to where it was before. So, they've done, invested a lot in new things that they have done that they wished they didn't plan on doing, but when you blow the building apart, they get to try a new venture, so. And it's still sad to drive through the countryside and see all the devastation and all the crop that is down. And I think, I think anybody that's a farmer has, this is a wonderful year. It's probably one of the best crop years we've ever had. And then to. And then to be able not to enjoy that because of a storm going through. And if you go through Hudson, there's no trees. I mean, that's, that's, it's, it's not funny. I mean, there's just no trees there. It's a town like that. So, anyway, we can, we can be thankful that we weren't affected on that. So, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Joe, any need for exec? Okay. Can I just get a motion to adjourn then?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right. Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.